Well, welcome. Tonight, the silly season starts. And I've only had one person ever know what that reference was about, that it's not what it sounds like. It's an honored reference to people who are willing to stand up and not just complain, not just have suggestions, but these are the people we're gonna meet over the next few weeks. Who are the ones who say, put me in, coach, I'm ready, I'm willing, and I'll put in the time to make things better? Tonight, we're gonna talk to a candidate for school committee. Now, anybody who's watched this show before during an election season knows, my opinion is, the school committee seats are the most leveraged seats in this town. I mean, we all think of the select board, we think of water company, we think of all sorts of things. But if you've got children and they get to high school, you fight for an hour a day, if you're lucky. They're always off doing something. The people that are on the school committee, the seven people, affect six hours a day of your child's life and set the tone for the rest of their lives. Colleges they get into, the activities they're associated with. So, to me, whether you have a child or not, you want to know who's on the school committee. Cause even if you don't have a child, the quality of the school system affects your house valuation. So let's start with an introduction.
Thank you. Thank you, Al, for having me on. My name is Christopher Wilson. I'm running for Milford School Committee. I'm up for reelection after already serving two terms. I'm a twenty-plus-year resident of Milford, along with my wife Kathy and my, and our two children, Ryan and Kaylee, who Ryan graduated two years ago from Milford High School, started at Shining Star Preschool. My daughter Kaylee will be graduating this spring, also started at Shining Star Preschool. So certainly lots of experience within the Milford school system. You know, Brookside to Woodland Elementary, to Stacy Middle School, to Milford High School. So, and again, starting at Shining Star. So have worked with lots of administrators, lots of teachers to kinda, you know, guiding students along. I might, you know, my children especially. So certainly just enjoy being a part of it from the school committee side. I kinda leverage my experience as a mechanical engineer and that sort of thinking, you know, to try to bring that level of thought to school committee, cause I work for a local tech firm. So just enjoy my, my time helping out Milford, also a town meeting member and also a planning board member. So certainly I stay busy.
Fundamental question. I'm from Milford, Chris. Why should I vote for you?
You know, I, one is, I, again, I just enjoy being a part of the process of serving my community. You know, I look at, you know, the example that my parents set for me and being a part of the community and helping out, and I think that kinda fostered my, my need or wanting to, to, you know, help out the Milford community. So being a part of it, you know, school committee was kind of a natural thing to, to, to look into. Back when my, you know, when the kids were, were kinda getting a little bit older, I freed up some time and wanted to kind of be a part of the educational policy part of it. So certainly I enjoy the policymaking that, that is involved with school committee, overseeing the superintendent, being part of the, you know, the review parts of the, of the superintendent, making sure that he is doing a, the, a sufficient job or a really good job at being the administrator of those policies, and then of course the budget. Being that the school budget is seventy percent of our town budget, I think it's very important to have a voice for the town and the people that would elect me into that position.
Now, we always joke about a Milfordian. You know, somebody who's third generation Milford and lives within two miles of their mother. I'm one of them. I didn't have a choice. I was born into Milford. You made a conscious decision to come to Milford, which in some ways in my mind makes you more of a Milfordian than people like me who were just born into it. Why Milford?
Born and raised in, in Bitterford, Maine, so southern town that was a blue collar town, very, very similar to Milford. Went to Northeastern University and then just kinda slowly moved out of the, out of the city. Milford is a town that popped up on the radar when I was working along the four ninety-five belt. That was very affordable. Through the research, you knew that was a blue collar town. So just kinda, a, a piece of property came up and we put a, an offer. We bought a condo and then from there started a family, bought another, went from a condo to a house. And then the family became from one to two. So, and then you just put roots in the ground. When, when the kids get into school, you start meeting other families and you, you know, you vacation with other families and you go to sporting events with other families. So again, you just, the roots grew deeper and deeper over the years. And you just saw the similarities of Milford in comparison to the similarities to the town that I grew up in. So just a town that, a lot of hardworking people that work together to make their town a good place to live.
One of the fundamental questions I always asked is, if I'm a new parent coming to Milford or considering coming to Milford, one of the biggest questions people ask is, will my child get a good education in the Milford school system? Now, you've put two through and you had two chances to bail out. First, when you bought your condo.
Right.
Then when you sold your condo, you could've bought a house anywhere and you stayed in Milford.
Right.
So if I'm brand new to Milford or considering Milford, and I ask you, will my child get a good education? What would your answer be?
I would say one hundred percent yes. You know, I think that, you know, Milford is a very diverse town and we're in a diverse community and a diverse world. My office is a diverse location also, right? So I think diversity is a great aspect to living and growing up. And, you know, I look at my hometown and it was not, you know, there wasn't a lot of diversity. And then I went to Northeastern University in downtown Boston and that was very eye-opening. And it opened me up to, to diversity and what, you know, all different ethnic cultures can bring, you know, to, to your world. So from that standpoint, I think it was a good, a good education for me. Now, in Milford, kids would start off in that diversity from a young age. And also, I believe that we in here in Milford have very good staff members that are going to educate our children from their start, whether that's in Shining Star Preschool or in kindergarten, or even a, a family that, that moved into Milford at any particular grade level. So, you know, my son, who graduated in twenty twenty-two, went on to a year of college down at Embry-Riddle. You know, I felt like he was prepared for that. You know, he also got into Bridgewater State University. So, and he was a, a student that struggled. He was part of the special education program. So he needed extra supports throughout, but when it came time to graduate, not only did he just graduate, but he got into colleges. My daughter, who is set to graduate this spring, general education student per se, right? You know, highly involved in extracurricular activities, is an A student. She's gotten into eight colleges, you know, at this time. So certainly I look at, they're two very different students that were on different pathways, but were successful in graduating and going on to college. So to the root of your question, can you get a good education in Milford? One hundred percent. I, I think with my two, my two children are alone, or, or, or who I look at, and then all their friends. You know, I, I handed out diplomas over those last couple of years to all these kids that were successful and graduated from Milford High School and were, were on to, you know, whether it's going into the workforce, going into the military, or going off to college.
And you know, I appreciate your opinion as school committee member and parent, but it's not unbiased. But when you say your daughter got into eight or did not get turned down by eight colleges, these are not Oki Finoki Community College. I mean, you mentioned Penn State, Clemson, Maryland. I mean, these are all top, top schools.
Right. Yeah, and she's going for biomechanical engineering. So again, she, she was, you know, supported throughout, you know, obviously as a engineering, going into the engineering major, she's very good at math and sciences. I feel like the, the math and science programs that we have are definitely fostering that, that type of interest in our students. You know, the town invested, what, five hundred thousand dollars a few years ago into our science labs? You know, so I feel like, you know, from the school committee side, we, we, we went to town. We asked for that. The town, the town supported it. And now we're seeing someone like my daughter, who is, was able to utilize that equipment to kind of foster her education.
Yeah, and congratulations, Kaylee, but too far.
Stay close, yeah.
Stay, stay closer.
Down south is a nice place to visit, so it's okay.
Yeah, but it'd be nicer if she was half hour away.
This is, this is true, yeah. She's spreading her wings.
But considering the caliber of the colleges she picked, she didn't do too bad.
Not at all. We're very proud of her. Very proud.
Now, when we start looking at the future, what do you think the three biggest challenges you're gonna face coming up?
Yeah. There was a guy that I've, I've heard many years saying there's a school coming. So obviously, the high school just recently was voted into the statement of interest program. So, so that is going to be a major focus over the next probably eight years, right? You know, it's certainly not a process that we just wave a magic wand and we get a brand new high school. So that's part of the reason why, even after running for two terms and, and my children not being in the schools anymore, that I wanted to go, come along for a third term, because again, there is a school coming. And I wanna be a part of that, that high school process. I feel like having experience on the school committee is going to be very important as we navigate through the different modules for the, for the, for the high school. But also, just also keeping in mind that our other schools are not all brand new, right? They're not all Woodland Elementary School. So I feel one of the top things is, is focusing on our facilities and truly making sure that our facilities are, you know, being maintained, you know? It's, it's not, they say it's not the building, it's what's inside the building. But unfortunately, over the last two years, we heard in the commencement speeches from our high school valedictorians and class presidents, they kinda poked fun at the high school and, you know, having to wear, use an umbrella inside the school, right? Yeah, so, so it, it, it was kinda like we had a good chuckle, but it also, you know, as a school committee member, it said, you know what? We need to focus on this. Like, it's important that the environment that they're in, even though they're surrounded by great staff, that the environment itself is also conducive to good learning. So I wanna make sure again that the infrastructure around it is good.
The whole Sea Wing project of investing in biotech. I remember walking into the Sea Wing saying, wow, this looks just like it did when I was here forty years ago. And it just hit like, oh my God, there's so much more that we need to do.
Right, yeah.
And luckily, town meeting, I hate to stereotype people, but town meeting, I felt really comfortable that they've never turned down the kids of Milford.
Right.
And they came up with the incremental half million bucks.
Right, yeah. And we know that technology is constantly growing and leaps and bounds. And so science and technology, it need to keep up with that, right? It's, it's very easy to, to open up a book and, you know, and have new volumes and, and they update the, the literature side of it. But the true technology behind science and engineering, you know, and, and basically all the computer and software programs that we're using now to facilitate learning. Certainly, it's, it's an investment, but it's a good investment in our future.
Let's talk a little bit about new high school. There's been some shockwaves. Tri-County, three hundred fifty-five million for a new school. Down by Haverhill, I think it was, four hundred and forty million dollar proposal for a school. Wha- what's your opinion on these approaches?
Well, it's, I think we are such at the ground floor right now. We just need to get into that feasibility study. And that feasibility study is going to go through and assess our high school and truly give us a pathway of what direction we as a community need to go in. And then we as a community are going to have to look at it, is what can we afford, right? Is our option just that we, we spruce the place up, we paint the walls, we change the windows? Do, or, you know, for X number of dollars, for a little bit more money? Do we knock down some areas, build up some areas, which costs us, you know, more, millions of dollars more? Or do we simply build a brand new school, which we know would be the most expensive? And, and I don't, I mean, obviously, I would want a brand new school, right? But as a taxpayer, I want what's going to be most economical and, and what the town can support, right? So these projects that are four hundred plus million dollars, if our town can support that, okay, that's great. But if our town cannot support that, and, and you from finance committee or Zach from town hall says, that's just not feasible, then we have to work together to make, make a plan that is best for the students and that, and best for the town taxpayers.
It'd be interesting, because where would you put a new school?
Right on top of the, the current?
Then where you put the kids?
Right, I know. And I've, I've kept an eye on, so Arlington, for example. You know, it's a very landlocked area and that's what they had to do. They had to go through and come up with the plans where they would knock down sections of their school and build up new sections, right? So if you look at the area in and around Milford High School, I feel like, you know, there, there's certainly a good amount of real estate. It's just what are we willing to remove in order to say build new wings or, or build up new?
And that certainly is a good compromise.
Yeah.
To sit there and say, build a new wing, move, shuffle the kids. Cause I don't know where you, when we did Brookside, we had to build a half of a new school.
Right.
And that was three hundred kids. I don't know where you'd put fourteen hundred.
Right, and you know, Brookside is a perfect example of a community of ours that's expanding and we had to add on classrooms and we found, found some space to put the additional classrooms on. So, you know, there are, there are a lot of smart people that are out there doing this throughout multiple communities within Massachusetts that kinda have plans in place and, and we can work with that it's going to be the best plan for, for our students in the long run. So, you know, unfortunately, construction costs, as we know, since COVID, it just skyrocketed. And, you know, what, what was once a two hundred million dollar school is now a three hundred million dollar school. So we'll definitely have to really keep an eye on the financial impact in, in order to get the best results.
Now, this sounds blasphemous, that somebody from the finance committee is saying, consider adding on to the high school. But what do you think about, we have a generational opportunity to add on a field house? Any opinion?
One hundred percent would be for it. Also a sports guy, but I feel like a field house, there has, has so much opportunity within, you know, a field house just gives the ability to, to host different events for, for not only sports, but also for any other type of extracurriculars that need a bigger space, right? So I feel like it just, as, as we look to the future, a field house is just one of those additions. It's not, I don't feel like it's a perk. I feel like it's almost a necessity and a need to have a bigger space as, you know, as our school population grows.
And it's interesting, cause when we went through the feasibility, the discussions of this high school, the question came up, do we need a pool? Do we absolutely need a pool? And it was a generational opportunity, because if we hadn't built that indoor pool then, we would've never built it now.
Right.
And I'm in the same place you are, even though it's more money. I think it's a once in a lifetime, once in a generation chance. Cause when I go up to the high school, I see the kids running up and down the hallways, cause they don't have a track indoors in the winter.
Yeah. Yeah, you go to a lot of other schools that they're, they've been built maybe in the last ten years and they have much bigger gymnasium facilities, right? And where they have multiple gyms that just, again, to facilitate and, and, and fill that need for the extracurricular activities that are going on.
So number one, dealing with the new school. What's the second biggest challenge you think you're gonna face?
Budget, 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 budget. Obviously, for those that are paying attention, we know that the state revenue is down from years past. Most recently, the school system was notified that what we anticipated for our chapter seventy funds, which are funds that come from the state and helps to kinda offset our diversity, what we expected to be about an eighteen percent increase was a four percent increase. So the, the local impact on our tax dollars is now much more significant. So school committee needs to really work with the administration team to look at our current spending, look at our new initiatives that we're looking as, as again, as our population has grown in the past, it's, it's kinda stayed level this past year, but student needs constantly are changing. So where is that balance, right? So we're getting less money, but student need is still growing. So where's the balance between the student need and the burden on the taxpayers? So that is, uh, that's probably a one B, not even a, you know, not even a number two. Like, so again, you know, you've got facilities that you need to maintain, but then you have that, that yearly working budget that we need to, to go through and, and to operate.
I was gonna say, I'll tip my hat to this current school committee. Because when we went into the budget discussion, I expected, you know, when I read about all the other school committees in surrounding towns, there's wars going on, there's strikes going on. So eighteen percent is a, a number, doesn't mean anything. Eight million dollars brings it on home.
Right.
You know, and obviously, the initial budget of what we would like was seven point something million in incremental expense. And you gotta chop down to three or four. I was absolutely stunned when I walked into that meeting with the school committee and y'all were talking about the balance. That for two years, we got seven million dollars of incremental money from the state and we used every penny. This year, you had to cut it back by three, four million dollars. So Zach, the finance director, the finance team, the FinCom, had come up with a number that we said, well, we probably can stretch to about.
Right.
And it was just very, very fulfilling that your school committee number that you said, this is where we think we can get to, was half a percent difference.
Right. Yeah, I mean, we certainly, you know, we want those initiatives. We, we, we sit down the first Saturday of, of the year for, you know, six hours going through those new initiatives and, and letting the administration team defend them. So we had gone through that and we moved, you know, probably seventy percent of them forward, right? In, in, in hopes that, again, these new initiatives are for the, you know, to grow our school system and, and for the betterment of the school system. But then when it comes down to the fact that it's going to be, you know, three to four million dollars worth of initiatives and that, and but our chapter seventy money has been cut by seven million dollars, well, okay. Now, you have to, you have to look at those initiatives of, from a different lens, right? And, and thank you for bringing it up, the fact that I was talking more on percentage. You're talking millions of dollars, right? And that needs to be addressed where, yes, I said eighteen percent to four percent, but that's seven million dollars.
Close to it. You understand, most of our residents don't understand what a percentage, that one percent cut in the school budget is what, seven hundred thousand?
Uh, I think it's close to a million, yeah.
But the fact that we started within a half a percent really, really impressed me.
Yeah, and, and think, you know, school committee was realistic. We, you know, we worked with, with the finance committee over the last few years where we got additional funds from, from, from the government and we utilized that to help offset some of the deficit from learning. The town hall absorbed the, the benefit side of it and we were able to use those funds to, to offset the hiring of those teachers. Unfortunately, you know, those, those funds have a shelf life. So now we, you know, we as a school system and the town had to absorb that cost. So we look at it there where we work together to be able to offset and, and, and bring people in, knowing that sooner or later, we were going to have to absorb that, not from the grant, but from the budget side. So FinCom has been good with us, so I think it was our time to look back at FinCom and be like, you know what? It's our, you've been good with us, right? We're going to work with you and we're gonna have to look harder at these initiatives. So right now, let's pull back on these initiatives. We know that we can get by with the staff that we have. Our staff is always working hard. So we're gonna work with them to try to maybe save some money within our current budget. And if, what, for every dollar we save in our current budget, maybe we can put forward to better the education with some new initiatives there too.
And the last time we ran into something like this was two thousand and three. And I remember, again, I was shocked, because some of the towns around, we all had a, all the municipalities had to cut their budgets. Romney had told us, here's what you're gonna get. It's all we got. And some of these towns around us, you heard that their school unions were proposing to delay their raises, which as a FinCom member, didn't make sense to me. If I can't afford to pay you today, how am I gonna pay you twice the increase at the end of the year? And our labor union came to us and said, we'll forego our raises. We'll give them up if you, and when they said guarantee, they know the FinCom, you know, most influential powerless people in town. We get one vote out of two hundred on town meeting floor. But we fought for it and town meeting came through. And it really felt good that we didn't have to fight the unions, that we were working together. And then two, three years later, when things got better, we made it up.
Right, yes. Yeah, and this past spring, for the first time, due to COVID, we, we extended the contracts, even though we're, you know, the contracts were kinda up after that three year, but we just did one year increments with them. So this past spring was the first time that, as a school committee member, I got to sit in on part of that whole negotiation process. So that was, uh, that was enlightening, you know, that was, it was, I thought it was a great process where we bring in that mediator to really facilitate the, the process, where you have school committee members, you have administrators, and then you have, you know, the staff that's in there. And, and you talk about all the different subject matters within the contract and you ask questions and you give scenarios and, and you talk about it. You know, and I felt like working with the Milford Teachers Association, it was a good process and, you know, they got a fair contract with us. You know, certainly they, they, it, it wasn't all easy. You know, there were some, some tough decisions and tough conversations had. But again, I feel like we worked with them, we worked with them well and, you know, what we just saw. And in Newton, you know, they, they definitely, they saw a very, very big divide there. And we didn't see any type of big divide. We got our contract done way before the old contract expired. So I was proud of being part of that process.
A lot of that, in my mind, is trust. The school committees over the years have built up a relationship and a trust with the unions and the unions with the town, because a strike doesn't help anybody.
So, yeah, and I think the key with our budget too, and is, in going back to just what we're looking at, even though our funding is less from the state, is never once was it mentioned that we wanna do any type of layoffs, right? So the idea was, we, we can't necessarily hire new staff currently, the way that the budget is, but we're gonna retain all the staff that we currently have. And I think that was an important statement to make and, and also to bring to FinCom, like, hey, listen, we're not planning on laying anybody off. We wanna keep the staff that we have and we wanna continue to work with that staff for the betterment of our school community.
One of the irritants that always comes up is school choice. Years ago- Years ago, the Gazinthers and the Gazaudes evened out. But over the past few years, uh decade, it's been in the negative. And now I understand that we've shut off, you can't shut off the people who are leaving. They have the right as parents to put their kids in whatever school system they want.
That's that that are accepting students.
That are accepting students. But as far as unless I'm grandfathered in, cause I have a sibling in Milford. If I'm in a different town, I wanna come to Milford, that door I understand is closed.
We've had to, yeah, we've had to close that down. Our student population has grown so much, uh so if we have a a class of say three hundred and thirty, three hundred fifty kids. There's of of Milford kids, there's simply no more seats from a kid from Hope Hill that wanted to come over. Right, or kid from Menden, so s- unfortunately, the the inn is full, right, like, there's just no more. Seats at the table in the classroom to be able to accept these students. It was great to be have that ability to because that came with some some monetary.
Some extra money.
Extra money, right, that we were able to use within our school choice funding. And and we could spend in in various ways for the betterment of the school system, unfortunately. We've had to shut that pipeline off, right, so we can't accept students in, therefore the money doesn't come with it. As you stated, we cannot prevent students from leaving the district. Um and and that's a whole other subject that we've we've tried to get our arms around it of why. We've had a few surveys and it just doesn't really. I feel the people, the the families that are leaving the district are very guarded on the reasons and and. I hear various reasons why, um but never a collective. Like reason of all these students are leaving because of X, Y, Z or or one point, everybody has their own unique reasons. For wanting to go to a different school system and sometimes it's just the parents had a bad experience here, right, their their kids are second generation. They didn't have a good experience in the Milford school system and they just want their kids to go to a different school system, so. It's hard to argue with that, it's hard to to change that mindset that they might have. Um other parents just look towards the charter school that's in Franklin that. It's a um, it's a, they're smaller class sizes, that the curriculum's a little bit different. And they just feel that their child is going to get a better education, I would argue that and I have good friends that. Have sent their kids to the charter school and and we have that conversation all the time. So I know what's going on in the charter school and try to bring some of that back to the Milford school system and and again, try to balance out.
And again, I I kind of look at it, are our kids number one getting into top schools? And two, are they graduating? You know, and again, you've got children that have gone through, um my oldest daughter. Except for one semester where she got a B plus. And she got a three nine five one semester instead of all fours, I would say Milford did well by training her to be successful in college.
Again, yeah, I think that we're, I feel like we're doing a very good job at at getting kids into college, I think the next phase is to really. For me to understand how have we prepared our students for college itself. Right, so our kids are getting good grades, they're uh, you know, they're building their resume up to get into colleges. Um now I feel like one thing now that I'm kind of in that phase is. Are these kids being successful when they hit the ground running in college? Um and and it's really hard, I know that Josh Altland and the high school have tried to send out information or tried to get information. Back on surveys, um but it's hard, right, the kids are, you know, they're off at college. They don't want much to do with their old high school, so they get an email and just like, yeah, I'll get to that later, so. Think that uh that'd be one thing that, you know, if reelected, that try to truly come up with a a way of connecting with. Former students and asking them, were you prepared? And if the answer is, you know, yes here, but no there, how can we better facilitate preparedness for them?
Now, one of the things that's always thrown up as naughty positive. Is that our MCAS scores in Milford are typically lower than a lot of the towns around us. What do you say to that?
I mean, certainly you you, it's it's the elephant in the room, it's our diversity, right? You know, um do I want our MCAS scores to go up? Of course, should we continue to work with our students to improve that? Of course. It's just Milford's different than those communities that we're surrounded by, if you and I jump on a plane and we go over to France or to Spain. Um and we try to take a a a course in the native language over there, I know for me, I'm I'm only an English speaker, I'm. I'm going to struggle taking a course, eh, excuse me, taking a test in another language, so we have a a a a large. Uh percentage of students that English is their second language, right? So they're taking a test where English is their second language. And they're just, they're struggling, right, with it, and that's why you see the lower test scores and and I don't wanna say that's an excuse, I wanna say that's a reason. But I also look at it that if we incrementally see improvements. In our MCAS scores, then we're doing the right thing, you know, right, they're they're low, they're low compared to the other towns. But I think we know why, we're not hiding behind it. Um and we're we're utilizing that to to kind of better the education, you know, and there are other assessment tools out there that the. These schools use, uh whether it's for, you know, a reading assessment or a math assessment. So we utilize that to kind of see how the students are doing incrementally throughout the learning process per grade level. Uh MCAS is just one of those that, you know, every town has to do it and we're held accountable. In comparison to those other towns.
Well, I wish they would let us dig deeper into what they publish. Cause I remember when my daughter hit the eighth grade, it was middle school east back then. And one of the most compassionate focused educators that I had the privilege of meeting was Tommy Daverin. That was his world, middle school east was his world. And I knew I was gonna get a reaction when I walked in, I said, Tommy, why do your MCAS scores suck? And he looked at me without blinking and said, cause you're ignorant, I said, great, enlighten me. And he pointed out that if you took the scores apart, he was very proud when he said, I'll put our top. And he used our, they were his kids, our top academic performers against any town around us. And they will do just as good or better, but you get a bimodal distribution. The kids who, you know, give me two years to learn Mandarin and take an assessment test. I'm probably not gonna do as well as I could in English.
I mean, there's certainly, there are success stories of, um you know, kids that have immigrated into our country. Uh Arthur Gomes was a perfect example, he's graduating this year, he has a uh a a full ride to a college in um. In Vermont, he came here with his family in the first grade without knowing any English and and just, you know. Slowly learn the language, he, you know, he he became a very good student and look at him now, right, you know. Couple weeks ago, we had the um ambassador for Brazil and a lot of other dignitaries there and he received awards, so. He's just one success story like that, uh so certainly kids can learn, they just, they just need to be taught. In a way where they can can learn and 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 brought into a system where they're encouraged to learn.
And it's a unique thing because I can speak that from experience, that when I first left my house. I came back home and said, what are these people talking? I don't understand a word, cause we'd never spoken English and it wasn't till my current, my darling bride came to my house the first time and said. Do you ever speak to your peo- your parents in English? And I said, of co-. No, only when there's people around who don't speak Portuguese. So I walked out of the house figuring everybody spoke Portuguese, in the heights, we were pretty safe. But again, once you just put your mind to it, you learned English. And I'm happy that I knew both the languages.
Yeah, you know, and our 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 English learning department, they do a phenomenal job, they're, you know, and they're not just teaching. Kids that are speaking just, you know, as Portuguese as their first language, there's Portuguese, there's Spanish. There's now we have Haitian Creole, there's kids that are.
Thirteen, fourteen languages.
There's numerous languages, so you know, there's there are higher percentage in the Portuguese and Spanish population based on Milford's demographics, but. Still, that doesn't mean that they can push aside the other twelve languages.
How are you gonna adjust to this cut in chapter seventy?
Um I think realistically, we already have, you know, uh you know, when we got that information, you know. I reached out to Zach, I reached out to the FinCom members, you know, just to let them know, so it's about communication too, you know. Let's not hide behind it, um let's make sure that we go through our current budget. And find out where are we truly spending all our money, I think this is a, it's going to be an exercise. In looking at our current budget and making sure that we are spending our money efficiently, right? It's it's that direct labor and indirect labor and certainly our students require the direct labor. And we want to make sure that we have as much direct labor force for them in that in that. We're teaching them and but we need that indirect labor force to kind of support the overall infrastructure of of learning.
The ugly question that nobody ever wants to ask, but I guess is scared to get the answer, are my kids safe in Milford?
I would think so, right, we have a uh, we have great school resource officers, you know, we, the town invested in um, in a in a. Response team if something very, very big happened, you know. Um other than that, I, you know, I just feel that the the staff, the administration teams. They're there to make sure the kids are safe, right, they're they're uh patrolling hallways and making sure kids are in classrooms and. And whether anything, I feel like they're communicating with students to ensure they know what's going on, right, that they're, that. If they sense some type of tension, that they're approaching the students and they're having the conversations with the students, right? Social emotional learning side is such a huge component of schools right now, right, and it's just, that could be a whole other conversation, but. You know, that department and what they knew, what they need to do and the staff they have to support students to ensure. The students are feeling safe within the schools and then then again, the staff that are making sure the kids are safe within the school, so. Yeah, it's, I feel they are safe and within our schools, if they weren't, my kids wouldn't have been there, right? Like, you know, my daughter has her license now, it's, she walks out the front door, she jumps in her car, she goes and, you know, as a parent, you're like, okay. She's gotta drive down the road, you know, is she gonna be safe there, so I almost feel like I feel. Better when she's within the school and safer within the school than driving down the roads of Milford just, and it's not that the roads in Milford are dangerous. It's just you worry and that's what you, as a parent, you, that's how it is.
Do we address all parts of the school population? I mean, we understand special needs. I worry more about the top ten percent. Because the median student, everybody can understand and develop programs. Special needs, well, you almost have to by law. But what are we doing for the next Nobel Prize winners of Milford?
Right, yeah, going back, you know, you you have by law, the special needs, you have by law now, the English learners. You have, you know, the the general ed students, as you were saying, that we're we're, you know, we're getting them to their potential, as you were saying earlier. And then pushing them a little bit more, right, and then you have that top ten percent, you know, and do we ha- are we. And do we have the programs to push them, and I would say we have those AP classes where they can still get college credit, uh so we have those in place. We also have um affiliations with some of the local colleges that kids can take college courses. So again, we're preparing those students and and challenging those students, now could we do more? One hundred percent, you know. Uh do we have the budget for it this year? No, I think a perfect example is one of, one of the. Uh initiatives that we we were going to ask for this year was an English teacher for the high school. And that English teacher at the high school was the hopes were to start ex- you know, expanding some some creative writing and and creative learning. Behind the, behind English and in the English education, so um the hope was to push a little bit harder there. Uh maybe if we can save some money in our current budget, maybe we can add that type of person on. I don't wanna close that door altogether, but those are the type of positions, yes, that we're looking at to try to, again, to challenge. Those top ten percent students.
Now, our English is learners, they come mainly from families. Who don't speak English. What are we doing to reach out? When I was a student in Milford school system. My mom and dad came to all the events and I always knew, my father was told, you need to support your son. Go to this event, so we'd be up on stage and I could look out there and see my parents. My father would put on his little hat, put on his suit, sat there oblivious to everything. Cause he didn't understand a word of what was going on, but he was there because somebody had told him. You need to be there to support your son, and I gotta admit, it felt special, cause I. It's gotta be painful to sit there and not understand a dang word for an hour or two, what are we doing to get more of these parents involved? In the educational process.
Yeah, we're, you know, we certainly can support those parents through translating services, you know, the the Milford Family Network, um. Certainly works with when when students uh come in to register. They have that support staff there to be able to communicate with the parents, I feel like, you know, any type of communication that goes out. Uh via email uh is in multiple languages, so we're we're, we have that benefit now where we can communicate. With parents in different languages, and again, when parents. Uh for a um, the parent teacher conferences, we support those parents by having the translators in place, so again, if. It's hard to get them to the door, but once they're at the door, we can support them the best that we can, so. I think it's, it's a constant challenge to to have those parents come in and feel comfortable. But I believe that we're doing a good job at is at providing the services and supports they would need to be there.
It's gotta be a scary movie, I I never really appreciated what my father went through to sit there for two hours. And have no idea of what's going on or getting snippets, but he was always there. And that sent a powerful message to me because if I didn't do well in school. I felt like I was letting him down, cause he was doing his part.
Yeah, you know, I mean, we have the students for what, fifteen percent of their of the day or their of the of a year, right, overall, you know. They're they're there at eight, they leave it to their their home, there's the weekends, there's vacation, so. We have a very, very small percentage that the students are within our buildings, right? And we do a really, really good job at teaching them very, lots of different aspects of life, right? It's 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 gone beyond just, you know, English, maths, social studies, sciences, it's gone to that's. The social emotional side and it's gone to, you know, how to uh get your parents to come in and be a part of it and. You know, do some extracurriculars and and as a society, be involved with more than just your regular school day. So I think there's a lot of different facets that not.
But what can you do? When we were kids, we were sent to school to be educated. And to this day, I expect, I I'm being cold and I'll get in trouble for it, but I pay teachers to educate my children. I don't pay him to raise my kids, that's something that I feel I should be doing. You know, but more and more, I had two parents who, the world revolved around me. You know, anything that they could do, they would, I'm always amazed when I was coaching soccer. The single parents, how they kept up with two kids or three kids. We had three of us, my mother, my darling bride and me, and we barely kept up with two. So I can see where they've gotta rely, but what extra strain does that put on the educational?
Huge, you know, the, you know, my my wife's in education for a neighboring town and, you know, I I see it on a daily basis, right? That you're saying teachers are just there to educate, well, they are just educating, but what they're educating. The students in has grown, right, it's no longer just math, reading, sciences, the the core subjects, right? They they're the ones that are fostering how to interact and be a good person and be a good friend and and how to communicate, so they're. The teachers' education process has expanded and it's, it has put stress on teachers, there's no doubt about. So they're, the teachers' education process has expanded and it's, it has put stress on teachers, there's no doubt about it.
Is this fair?
Uh, no, it's not fair, like that's the easy, the easy answer is no, it's not fair to them. Especially since we're putting stress on them. Um but that has been a systematic change for years and years and there's no magic wand that can just pull it all away. Um you know, just unfortunately, we're just living a different time where the teacher is, you know, it's. They they're a teacher, they're a social worker, they're, you know, they're they're. Doing multiple aspects of the education process, you know, and and they've evolved to be that way. But they've also, it comes at a price and that prices a lot of stress on them. It's it's getting harder and harder to find teachers, teachers are leaving the field because they can go into a private industry. It's a little bit less stressful, you know, um but there are, you know, there's benefits to be a teacher.
It's amazing to me because what they built into me, I mean, when I graduated Milford High. I wanted to do what every Milford kid wants to do, get away, as far away as I could. And I went to school in Worcester, not so far. I moved down to Washington for my job, not so far. I loved Washington. There's a power dynamic down there, there's life that you can't compete with in a small town. Moved to Paris for a number of years, the culture, the, just different, it was wonderful. But then when we had children, that gravitational pull brought me right back to Milford. And that was very influenced by the attitude, everything the teachers brought to bear. You know, so I feel like we're asking the teachers sometimes to do too much or demanding that they do too much.
Yeah, there's, again, there there's a lot on their plate, um you know, there. There are a part of that, even though they're a small percentage of the student's day. And the students overall, like life throughout the 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 year long, right, they, it's a hundred and eighty day school year, right? But there's three hundred sixty five days in a year, there's twenty four hours in a day, but the school day is only six hours. So when you start breaking that down and then you take away some, you know, lunchtime or in time for them to, kids to just. Get out and run around and be kids, right, there's just, there's not a lot of time. From the educational side, right, to really push what we need to. And then you add on the component of the social emotional or needing to learn another language or come familiar with the English language, right? So again, there's just all these components that a teacher has got to evolve with as the demands have evolved.
But again, they have such a heavy influence. You know, when I look back and say, why did I do this, I I joke around because I came back when my daughter went to Stacy. And there was Anne Marie Longo, I shouldn't use anybody's names, but. I saw her and she was my French teacher at eighth grade. And she came to me and said, I got a question, do you remember your last words to me? Now, this was thirty years later, why does she even remember I'm a student of hers? I said, no, should I? She goes, didn't you say, why am I learning French, I'll never use it? I said, yeah, that's probably something I said. She goes, and where did you just move back from? I said, Paris. But it just amazed me that here's somebody who did have an effect on me. And yet she remembered, I was one of twenty some kids in her class that year. One class out of thirty years running and this woman still remembered me. You know, a few years ago, we were doing um live show at the um polling place. And my kindergarten teacher came up to me, says, I bet you you don't remember me. Well, that was si- sixty years ago and she still remembered that she had me in class. The teachers are amazing to me.
Definitely, they, you can make a great connection with a teacher, right, and it's gonna be a lifelong connection and you remember experiences within the classroom. And, you know, whether it's the that teacher that just introduced you to, you know, having to get up and give a report. And you were afraid to stand up in front of the class, right, but they encourage you, they fostered that. And it kind of broke that ice, right, you know, to the teacher that uh introduced you to science and a s- a specific aspect of science. And you're like, really, I really like that, that's something that I'm interested in, maybe that's gonna be my my life path. So I feel like teachers have a, they have a lot of influence on our, on their students.
Ways that you never know.
Bonds.
I remember another teacher, even Marie Visconti, made me do a project studying the muckrakers. Upton Sinclair in the twenties and the muckrakers. It put the union in perspective, here I am, you know, sixty seven years, so what's that, about forty five years later, fifty years later? It is fifty years, cause my fiftieth anniversary for school. And I still remember that report she made me do.
Right, yeah, it's just funny what what sticks with you, right, and what sort of bonds that you can make with a teacher. And and how important those bonds are, right? You can have students that just show up and and go through the motions, or you can have, you know, you can have students that invest in the learning process. And and unfortunately, not every student is going to, um but the teachers are going to try, right? They're not gonna cave in and and say this is a lost cause, they, every teacher I know is going to continue to work. Towards every student and and making sure that that every student learns and is is capable of moving on.
I just, I'm amazed, as my, we talked about earlier. When my daughter said, if I push every child to their potential in a little bit more, I've just done my job. That to me just says it all, cause they don't have to. But they take it on and it's not like they're getting paid outlandish amounts of money.
No, definitely not, there's not too many school teachers that are doing it for the money, you know, certainly, you know, when you first start, you're, you know, you're. You could go out to the private sector and make a lot more as the years go through and the steps and the lanes. And there's not many other uh jobs out there that require you to go out and get your master's degree too, right? As an educator, you're required to, you're required to get your masters within a certain timeframe. Um the benefit of that is, yes, you do move over a lane and, you know, where you get more money. But again, you've.
But it's not that much.
Well, yeah, you're investing money to to get more money, so, you know, there's a balance there, you know, if if teaching was easy, everybody would do it.
Chris, I'm from Milford, why should I vote for you?
So again, thank you for having me on the show, uh yeah, Chris Wilson, running again for reelection for my third term for school committee. Um unfinished business is the, is why I'd like everybody to vote for me. Um you know, we have this new school coming, we're uh looking at a um. At a a different type of budget season that we've had, we haven't had in the past. So I think experience uh from this, from knowledge of the schools and the facilities and experience in working with with the finance committee. On these budgets is going to be very, very important over these next few years. So I hope that I can get the uh Milford vote out there and continue on to represent the Milford community on the Milford school.
And again, my hat's off because I expected it to be a lot more of a difficult process to hammer out a budget. When we're talking about cutting four million dollars. I'm not saying it's easy, we still got a long way to go. But boy, was it eye opening that the school committee and management, administration, I guess, came to us with a plan. That was already very close.
Right, yeah, it's, you've gotta work and communicate with all the town boards.
Thank you for joining tonight. To our six loyal viewers, I hope you get a good understanding of what each school committee member does. I'll never ask you to vote for a specific candidate, no matter how I feel, but I'll beg you to get out and vote. There's different forums, there's different shows, take your time, find out what each candidate stands for. And if you believe they're the kind of person that you want to be influencing your children's lives, get out and vote for them. So as always, may God bless, may tomorrow be a better night than tonight, good night.